And stand for the budget allegiance in the chamber. Roll call, please.
Counselor Housechild?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Now is the time for council members to make announcements. Do we have any counselors that wish to make announcements at this time? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Housechild?
No.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. Mr. Mulder, would you highlight the communications on our agenda?
The first one is just for your information. It's regarding Minnesota Powers Duluth Loop Reliability Project. They are just starting the process of looking at additional transmission lines in Hermantown. I don't think it'll impact the community, the city, but it may impact the community somewhat. And then the second one is just the sales tax revenue for the last five years.
Thank you. Presentations for department heads. Tonight, we have Chief Kreis for his annual report presentation. Chief, are you ready to go?
I am. Mr. Wicklund's gonna run the PowerPoint for me here. So he's gonna share his screen and we'll go from there. Okay. There we go. So we had a long time retiree in the department retire in 2020, Luanne McMillan, left us in the winter months before the pandemic hit. And we got her on the front page here because her contributions to the city, both in the police department and over in City Hall over the years were very very big and we appreciated her service. One other thing, I guess, you know, just on the front page there, I just wanted to note, since I don't normally wouldn't think of it, is that our winter parking regulations are, I think, are doing a good job for our Public Works Department. The new ordinance and especially since we put the signage up, we've been having a lot of good compliance. So we'll move on to page two. Budget. If you look at the upper yearly budget comparison, that shows a comparison kind of to from 2019 to 2020. In the dark is the budgeted number and then in lighter salmon color is the expenditure, the actual. You'll see that in 2020, we're a bit over budget. I think it was the first time in 10 years that we were actually over. We were two and a half percent over. 2020, we were six and a half percent or 6.49% under. And then if you look at just expenses in 2019, and I'm sure, sorry, 2020, you will see that we were about 15% under budget in the operating and about 3.8 in personnel. Moving on to the next page, again, this is budgeting numbers. This is kind of where our revenue comes from. The majority of the revenue by program comes through police state aid from the state, the $14,000 that you see there. In purple is police training reimbursement that also comes from the state. The TCD grant, that's our extra traffic enforcement money. Last year was just shy of $32,000 from the state and feds. And then the, and then the other federal programs, that would be like our vest reimbursements that come from the, from there. So. And if you look down below, it kind of breaks it down a little bit more. The Training Center brought in about $1,100. With it being closed, that revenues were down there. Archery permits, however, were up. Dog licenses, you'll see later, are kind of down, and I'll give you an explanation on that. Forfeitures are down a little bit. This prosecution number that you see, that is money that comes in as a portion of forfeitures that the city attorney gets, but then turns back to us. So it gets put into prosecution. And then that might be some, some court fines that go in there as well, or court fees. I'm not positive on that. Our fines were about $38,000 and and then the police services is 77,000. If we move on to the next page, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about COVID and the pandemic and how it affected police operations, budgets. The numbers that I showed you on the budget were impacted by COVID in a large way. And you'll see that our calls for service and some of our other stuff were as well. So our department, as you know, went to a temporary schedule where we made, we compacted the two crews and had less people on duty at a time and made three crews working five days on and 10 days after in the early days of the pandemic. So we kind of made sure that we could keep everybody healthy. You're going to see in this report that a lot of our numbers are down, our activity is down from 2020. Other, like I mentioned in the budget portion, other COVID changes where our Training Center was closed, any outside groups. In fact, it just opened back up last week. And has been closed for a year. It was used most recently as a COVID testing area for public safety only. So I don't consider that open. We didn't charge anything for it. It was, it was public health doing testing. Another thing that was impacted that we haven't opened back up, but we are on the brink of doing that is our fingerprinting services. So that, that brought a lot less people in and did affect some revenues as well. So. If we move on to the next slide, once again, effects of COVID, our mileage was down close to 20%, 19 and a half percent or 36,000 miles. That is due to officers responding to calls by phone. Quite frankly, during the pandemic, we were, we were not going to folk, to see folks in person as much. We, in the really early days, we told officers we didn't want them to do any proactive traffic stops and those types of things that would expose them to have, give them a possible exposure. So that just led to us being very reactive in 2020. That has changed, obviously, as we learn more about the pandemic and how you can contract COVID-19. We loosened that up, but the, the long effects did last, or these effects did last throughout much of 2020. On the next slide, I wanted to just kind of talk a little bit. We did talk a little bit about Luanne McMillan leaving our agency. In the bottom, you'll see that we did hire three new people. We, in clerical, we hired Samantha Knapp. She's a long-term Hermantown resident, grew up here. She is our, doing a great job in our clerical section. We hired John Strasic on the B Crew. He is, just got off of his FTO and is, today is actually his first day patrolling the streets without having a partner or a trainer. And then we hired Olivia Gottschall. She is still on her, her field training, but should be done within this, this month. Their hires were, were in response to Gary Canizel leaving our department. So in, in August, then we hired them in November. So we're happy to have them. They're doing a great job. And the, the, the first hire was to replace him. The second hire was our, our additional officer that was built into the budget. So. Next year, you'll see two officers in the Detective Bureau instead of one. So this A Crew will not have five people on it. It'll have four. And the Detective Bureau will have two officers in plainclothes doing investigations. We go to staffing. This is a little bit of a boring slide. There's not all those nice pictures, but you'll see that Officer Canizel was with us for about three years. And Luanne McMillan was with the police department for 16. And I, I'm sorry, but I don't know how long she was with the city, but I, I think it was several years. So. So moving on.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, moving on from there. Community involvement was tough for us in, in, oh, excuse me, in 2020. It was really hard to, to get out and see people. We, we had to do a lot of drive-by stuff. Both people stopping here, here and us stopping at other people's houses. Excuse me, I got their cups. You'll see that many nice gifts were delivered to us and we delivered gifts to others. The bottom pictures are shop with a cop instead of actually shopping with the kid, with the kids. Erica Johnson, our School Resource Officer, set up a drive-through situat- situation, excuse me, I gotta get a water, a drive-through situation where the kids got their gift cards in a drive-through. Moving on to the next slide, Joe, please. Our School Resource Officer last year was started Erica Johnson. She's in her second year. During 2019 and 20, she did teach two classes of Dare. So it was quite the undertaking. And we did both the fifth and sixth graders. And the reason for that is they switched what grades it was going to be offered at. So she had to do, she had to do it to, to both grades. She's doing a great job up there. Again, it was a tough situation with the school being closed. She was kind of split between the office and trying to do outreach with the kids throughout the year. Some of the kids having some, you know, trouble with learning from home and that kind of stuff. So it wasn't her traditional in the school kind of duties, but the partnership continues with the school. If we move on to the next slide, you will see what our, our K-9 team did in 2020. We had, I'm not going to go through each one, but you can see they were used extensively on different searches and, and high-risk situations. I want, I did want to highlight on the next slide, a few of the more prominent calls that they, they were on. Again, I'm not going to read each one, but I'm sure most of you have already read this report, but these, I, I just asked to, to highlight four kind of more significant issues so that I could let you kind of visualize and see the kind of stuff that they participate in and the value that they bring both to our department and our partner agencies. The K-9, K-9 teams are part of the Northland K-9 Foundation. And as part of that, it's, it's, we kind of share resources. So one day, our officers might be in Duluth helping out on a call if they don't have a dog on. And if we don't have a dog team on duty, Duluth might be here or in Proctor or in the county. And, and it's, it's a good situation that we can share those services. So. Both of these dogs are in that six and seven-year-old range. So they probably have about three to four years left, and then we will have to replace them. If you remember, we do, as part of the foundation, I may have told you before, the foundation pays for our replacement dogs. And several years ago, or a couple of years ago, we, we were named in somebody's will. And that helps to fund some of their operations and training and that kind of stuff as well. So we'll move on to the, the next, the next page, the Investigative Division. We did have a third-degree murder case that we worked on for about four weeks. That was a third-degree murder via drug overdose. So we go after the dealer. And that, like I said, that case took about four weeks straight of our investigator's time. So understand, if they're working four weeks on a case, these cases just continue to come in and build and build and build, and there becomes a backlog. So. We had a burglary and stolen property ring that took about three weeks. And I'm, I don't know, just not, for, in the essence of time, I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but you can see the kind of time that it takes. The officers were, the detective was assigned less cases in 2020 than in past years, as you can see. And part of that is, again, kind of the COVID-19 effect. But you could see kind of the percent, the, the cases that were closed and what was assigned there. If you go on to the next page, this just kind of breaks down what types of cases we're following up on. To no surprise, you know, we, we do a lot of social services stuff as well. And, and then our theft cases are some of the higher numbers that we take care of. So in our city. Moving on to the next slide, training. Again, I, I feel like I'm just saying the same thing over and over and over, but COVID-19, we really did kind of halt a lot of our training. We did the mandatory training and that was about it. That, that, we still went out and did our firearms four times during the year. We still did our use of force training. We still did lots of OSHA training, actually, and PPE because of the pandemic. And then a lot of online-type training. And, and one of the, that was one of those line items in the police budget that was way, way, way under budget, was training and travel because they, they affect each other. If we travel, go to training and travel dollars get spent as well. So moving on to the next slide, this is our call volume. We had the lowest call volume since 2012. You can see in the top slide, we, we've been hovering around that 10,000 mark for several years. Five-year average is 10,029 calls. And we were down 23% from 2019. Our calls for service, meaning our calls from dispatch, were down about 18%. And then our self-initiated calls, meaning traffic stops, community outreach, business checks, that kind of stuff where we're outwardly working and trying to have contact with the county or community, we're down 33%. That was by design to protect our employees and their health and safety. And quite frankly, there just really wasn't anybody out. I mean, there was times after 9:00 PM where it was absolute ghost town out there. So the officers didn't have a lot of traffic enforcement to do if they, if they wanted to. So. Next page. One of our, one of our things that we've been working on for several years is to work on our response time. Okay? It's a little bit suspect because of the pandemic, but our, our priority one calls were down almost a minute. That's something I'm, I'm very proud of. We, we, we are getting to these calls quicker. Okay? One of the things that, that I haven't really been able to figure out quite yet is why our, our priority two calls were longer and our priority three calls were even longer. Some of that might be because we had less officers on the street at a time for a period of time there where we were working that special schedule. And part of that may be because of the way that they put the information into CAD. If they were making a phone call back, that CAD doesn't always get updated at the time, like it does if they're in their car and they push the button in their computer in their squad that they're on scene. So these numbers are a little bit suspect. I trust the priority one call situation much better, that, that part, because those calls are the types of calls that the officers were actually out responding in person to, no matter what. Moving on to arrests. Our arrests were also down about 37%. It kind of spiked in 2019. We're down from, from what our average would be here. And, and I think we're going to probably see that rebound. Our average was, five-year average was about 482, and we were at 429. That can be good news or bad news. Depends on, on how you look at it. We look at it, or I look at it as if, if they're all doing their job, arrests should be happening. But when the calls for service were down, it's clear why the arrests are down because less people were calling us. So less response, less crimes being committed. So. Moving on to the next page, this one's a really busy slide, but it, it's basically, you see in our Part One crimes, it's, it's a good thing to have in a community, but most of ours is property crimes. It's thefts. Okay? With our business district, the way it is, 90% of our Part One crimes are thefts. Moving down to Part Two crimes, a little less serious type crimes, vandalism, rates high, fraud, narcotics, DUI, and assault. Moving on to the next slide. This, this slide is really busy, but you can kind of see a trend with our, with our larcenies, which is a theft call. It's a federal term for theft. They're pretty steadily around that 400 range. In 19, we had a spike, which would also answer the question why our arrests were up in 19. There was a spike in arrests as well. If you look at our, our rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, there isn't really a big rhyme or reason. The numbers are so low that percentage-wise, if you have a couple more, it throws that number way, that percentage way off. So I'm not gonna try to dissect that for you too much. If you look at the clearance rate for Part One crimes, we're at about 50%, just, just higher than 50% on our larcenies right now. I'm really hoping that this additional investigator that we're putting on is gonna, is gonna change that clearance rate and make that higher because we'll have more time. I think I told you in a former presentation that our, our investigator was getting up to 250 cases in a year. If you imagine, you know, you work 50, 50 weeks in a, in a year with vacation and, and that, you're getting about a case a day. And so, and then you, you think about the cases that take you four weeks, you can understand why somebody gets behind. And then the information starts to get stale and, and you just, it's harder to clear those cases. We'll move on to the next slide, Joe. This, this is an incredibly busy slide. It just kind of talks about our, our clearance rate on all of our different types of calls. And it, it, it really doesn't give you much, but it's a slide that we do to try to pull the information out. So we're just gonna skip past that one. This one's always interesting to me because we get people asking, well, why do you have so many cops on during the day? And I explain to them, you know, and some, some folks might think that, well, the nighttime is the busiest time, right, for police officers. We, we have about 15% of our calls between midnight and 8:00 AM. 46%, over 46% were, are in the business hours. And then the evening hours from 4:00 to midnight, 38%. So that's where we, in our staffing plan, we build up our staff. Okay? We have less staff on from midnight to 8:00 in the morning than we do 8:00 in the morning to, to 4:00 in the afternoon. And then we, and then it tapers off in the evening as well. So our, our highest staffing numbers are in that 8:00 to 4:00 PM timeframe. Next slide. This just talks about the monthly activity. I'm not going to dig into it very, a whole lot, but I'll tell you that the average per month is about 639. If you look at April, 326. 326 calls for service. That's just a crazy low number, right? That's because of when the pandemic hit and people weren't moving. They just weren't moving and crimes were, you know, under, calls for service were under half of what they normally would be. Moving on to property lost and found, this just talks a little bit about what gets called in. We had 42 cases this year. We tried to narrow down why that would be. I think more people were out taking walks and found things. There was 10 purses and wallets found, three bikes, seven phones and two guns. One of the guns was found in a rental vehicle, and the other one was found in a gas station bathroom, of all places. If we move on to the next case here, or the next slide is casualties, our accidents, our crashes were down by nearly 100. Again, less miles traveled in 2020. It was about a 24% decrease. Ironically, suicides, we, we, we thought that we were gonna see an increase in that. We really thought that mental health with, with the pandemic was gonna be tough on people. If you look at suicide attempts, it was our lowest number in recent time. So that was interesting to us, that, that the, the, the pandemic didn't have the effect that we thought it might have on mental health that way. If you move on to the next slide, this again is just kind of some, some parsed-out information on what, what our miscellaneous, miscellaneous public calls are. The one that kind of I bolded here, 94 dog complaints. Again, I think those are down about 15 to 20%, and I think that's primarily because people were home and they weren't leaving their dogs out on the tied out, and we weren't getting as many complaints on it. Open car doors were down. People weren't driving as much. Excuse me, suspicious vehicles, down. Every, all these calls were down with the exception of the CO detector situation, which those, those did rise. They were over double. It's a small number, but we did see more of that. Ironically, if you look at our kid trouble, we're about 50% of what we were in 2018. So maybe there was more parenting going on this past year. I don't know. Moving on to the next slide, finger, fingerprints were down 76%. And that's basically, if you figure it out, we did them January, February, March. And 75% of the year, we weren't doing them. So that number correlates with that. Dog licenses, they are down. I would say the reason that those are down, and you're going to continue to see them down and that revenue down, is because we started offering lifetime dog licenses. So people are buying one-time license and they, and they don't have to buy them again. Moving on to the next slide, traffic. I've talked about traffic at length already. I'm not going to talk too much more about that. I will just say that about 25% of our traffic stops result in a warning. Actually, it's about 2.5 warnings for every citation issued. The reason I always tell you folks about that every year is because we really try to solve the problems with the least amount of enforcement necessary. So we can just have, discuss it and have some education alongside the roadway. And we think that that's going to solve the problem. That's, that's where we, that's where we end it. If we think that we need to issue a citation to solve a problem, then, then we would do that. Your officers are, are not heavy-handed in, in their enforcement, I guess, is the point. The percent of accidents compared to traffic stops has gone up a little bit. And I think part of that is frankly, because we were, we, we weren't doing as much traffic enforcement this year as normal because of the pandemic. this year as normal because of the pandemic. When we got to the next page, that just breaks down kind of what the typical kind of traffic stops were for. If you think about warnings, typically, if you see this one, it says over center line. Typically, that those stops are are typically when you're looking for an impaired driver, where people are weaving on the road. So we rarely ticket on that. It's a stop where we stop somebody and and make sure that they're okay to drive and leave them, let leave them on their way. Same thing with the signal. Failure to signal situation. But then if you look at inattentive driving, the, 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 the black line is very tall. That is because of the new texting and driving that falls under the inattentive driving statute. And we did take a pretty hard stance on that and 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 write quite a few more tickets on that. So that is it. If we move to the next page, it's my just my thank you again. That's our before Luann retired, we did our every five years, we take a department portrait for history sake. And that was your staff at the beginning of two thousand twenty. And we just thank the council and the community for letting us serve. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Start with the council, Council Nelson, any comments or questions?
No, thank you very much for the report. It was very interesting.
Counsel Peterson.
Jim, just with those trends, are you seeing, is that what you're seeing through communities of similar size? Just with the
I gotta be honest, I, I, I'll be really honest, I didn't even ask.
Yeah, I just, I know some cities have seen the opposite, but I think it's larger cities. So I was just curious if you knew of any of those trends. It's good to see the numbers where they were, but.
Yeah, I know. As far as the proactive enforcement in our state and our area, you're probably seeing the same trends because a lot of that proactive enforcement was kind of suspended for a while. You're gonna see that return.
No, thanks, Jim. It was good information.
Counselor Housechild.
Thanks, Jim. I don't have any questions, but yeah, good presentation. And I agree, good to see the numbers where they're at. And obviously, some of this will pick up as as we get past the pandemic. But nonetheless, it's good results.
Thank you. And Jim, I'd like to say thank you to your you and all the members of your department for everything you do. You have garnered and kept public support throughout the community. And that's a good thing, a good feather in your cap. Of course, I do have one question relating to something near and dear to my heart, and that's the DARE program. Are we back to teaching that to fifth graders?
We are, yep. And that's why we had to do the sixth and the fifth grade. Otherwise, we to pick up next this year's fifth graders, we had to do two classes. And she is actually doing that in person, right? This month into next month.
Thank you. I I think you'll see a better result with fifth graders than sixth. From teaching it myself, it was a little more difficult with sixth graders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Oh, moved. Host child.
Second Peterson.
Motion by Counselor Housechild, second by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Housechild.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Ordinances, this is the first reading for ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero one. An ordinance amending chapter five alcoholic beverages of the Hermantown City zoning code by amending section five twenty license fees. First reading, would you like to comment on that, Mr. Mulder?
Sure, just a quick explanation of this. This is for our on sale liquor licenses. We eliminated the five hundred dollar dance fee for this year. And we reduced the fees by twenty-five percent. But it's just for this year and because of the pandemic.
Thank you. And we will move on to ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero two, another first reading. An ordinance amending chapter three, public property of the Hermantown City Code by amending section three fifty, accepted and open streets and roads. Mr. Mulder, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, so what we did was we just looked through our list of public roads and streets and updated those based upon some new additions. But also, in some cases, we changed just the segment description. And in a couple of cases, like for instance, Carlson Road, we changed it from gravel to batuminous.
Thank you. And I'd like to stop for a moment and back up in the agenda to something I missed. General public discussion, is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to speak to the council at this time? If so, please state your name and address. We will also have an opportunity for public input on each resolution and each vote. We will with no public input in general, we will move on to resolution two thousand twenty-one dash three five. Resolution providing for the sale of four million thirty-five thousand general obligation improvement and refunding bonds. Series two thousand twenty-one A. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Peterson.
Second Nelson.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Nelson. Mr. Mulder, would you like Mr. Arm to explain this one?
Sure, if you would do that, that would be helpful.
Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This resolution will provide for sale like, like it says, is four million dollars approximately. There's two components to it. The first component is the twenty twenty-one road improvement plan, primarily Le Big Junction. The second component of it is refinancing the two thousand and twelve series B bonds for interest savings. If approved tonight, this would this would enable an elders or our bond company to then sell these bonds. They would be sold around April or we're targeting April nineteenth. And about May sixth is when the city would receive the money again to refinance. And then to also do some road improvements that we were planning on doing this summer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Counsel Nelson.
No comment.
Counsel Peterson.
No.
Counselor Housechild. And I have no comment. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this motion? With no comments, we will move to a roll call.
Counsel Peterson.
Aye.
Housechild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Move to resolution two thousand twenty-one dash three six. Resolution authorizing and directing or authorizing the Director of Finance and Administration to amend selected two thousand twenty budgets and make transfers. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Nelson.
Second host child.
Motion by Counsel Nelson, second by Counsel Housechild. Mr. Mulder, should Mr. Arm address this one again?
Yes, please.
Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks again. So this is going to amend the budget and approval transfers done in two thousand twenty. Two main reasons. The first is we have a little bit of surplus in a few of our funds from the twenty twenty road improvement project. And so that's transferring the excess money into the debt service fund, the bond fund that is servicing those road improvements. The second main reason for these transfers and budget amendments are we're gonna take some surplus from two thousand twenty and transfer it into specific funds that we reduce the two thousand twenty-one budget by in order to minimize the tax levy increase. So this will then put us back on track in those specific funds to where our financial management plan had us going. So we're going to that we're going to transfer a little bit of money to help make that those funds whole again for the financial management plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson.
No comment.
Counsel Peterson.
No comment.
Counselor Housechild.
No comments.
And I have only one comment. I'm grateful that we're able to increase some of those funds for two thousand twenty-one without increasing taxes. And I appreciate that. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this? If so, please state your name and address. With no public comment, we would have a roll call.
Counselor Housechild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash three seven. Resolution approving a local road improvement grant application for street improvement on Richard Avenue and Lindgren Road in the Hermantown marketplace. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second host child.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Housechild and Mr. Mulder.
This is a grant application to the state of Minnesota through St. Louis County for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars so that we could potentially build Richard Avenue and upgrade Lindgren Road to a paved road with sidewalks. Back in two thousand seventeen, we estimated the cost to be one point five million. We haven't proceeded at this point because of in part just there wasn't the development pressure on that and we didn't really have a great funding source. If we're able to get this grant, that would cover about half the cost. And then we want to proceed if we're able to get this grant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counsel Nelson.
No, no comment.
Counsel Peterson.
No.
Counselor Housechild.
No.
And I have no comment. Is there any public comment on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. With no public comment, we will have a roll call.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Housechild.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash three eight. Resolution approving a local road improvement grant application for street improvement district number five thirty-four S P two zero two one zero one zero one four. Uggstead Road and Arrowhead Road. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Nelson.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Nelson, second by Counsel Peterson, Mr. Mulder.
So the city of Hermantown is going to be redoing Uggstead Road from Highway fifty-three to Maple Grove Road. And then Arrowhead Road from Filkie Circle to Hawk Circle. We have that planned for two thousand twenty-two and we are starting that project. But we also learned recently that we potentially are eligible for the local road improvement grant for that stretch of road. And it meets a number of the criteria of the grant. If we are successful, we'd be able to reduce the amount of municipal state aid we're using on this project. And we will be able to use that for future road projects in the future.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counsel Nelson.
No comment.
Counsel Peterson.
No comment.
Counselor Housechild.
No.
And my only question is, we were told that we may receive an answer on this in May of this year or May of next year.
May of this year.
Is there any public comment on this matter? If so, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Peterson.
Aye.
Housechild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash three nine. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver license for utility to cross public waters from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the city of Hermantown for relocating water and sewer mains under King Creek at Morris Thomas Road. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Peterson.
Second host child.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Housechild. Mr. Mulder.
St. Louis County will be redoing Morris Thomas Road in two thousand twenty-one. And including in that will be a larger culvert at the King Creek location. Our water and sewer mains were in the way of their culvert, so we had to relocate those. When we presented that plan to the D N R, they said that we should renew our license from them to cross a public waters. So this is that license. It's for fifty years for both the water main and the sewer main under King Creek.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson.
No comment.
Counsel Peterson.
No comment.
Counselor Housechild.
No comment.
And I have no comment. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call.
Counselor Housechild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash four zero. Resolution approving a grant application to the Western Lake Superior Sanitary District. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Counselor Housechild with the motion.
Yes.
And Counsel Peterson with the second. Mr. Mulder.
So this is a grant application to Western Lake Superior Sanitary District. What we want to do here, if we're successful, is to hire a part-time G I S technician to get data points on various parts of our sewer system, including manholes, lift stations, things like that, but also some of our stormwater. And the idea is that if we map that, perhaps we can identify where there might be some I N I. And it would just give us a overall better data set in order to manage our system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson.
No.
Counsel Peterson.
No.
Counselor Housechild. And I have nothing. Any member of the public that wishes to comment on this, please do so by starting with your name and address. With no public comment, we'll have a roll call.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Housechild.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. And that ends our business for this evening. I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Okay, the motion was Counsel Peterson and the second was Counsel Nelson. Is that right?
Right.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Night everyone.